All right, we're gonna call order the Glaze County Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting for Monday, April twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-five at six P. M. I'll have the prayer by Commissioner Taylor and replaced by Commissioner Patterson with everybody's in rise.
Lord, we thank you for the opportunity, the help, and the freedom to gather here today. We're offering your blessings upon this meeting, work of his wisdom and discernment concerning things of the county, and bless each one here and their families, Jesus and amen.
Pleasure leaders.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everybody here tonight. Uh, I don't think we have any amendments to the agenda. Public input on non-agenda items, anyone wishing to provide public comment, please fill out a comment card table at the entrance of Commissioner Chambers. Please note, all comments on non-agenda items are limited to three minutes and/or the board's discretion. With that, we will move right into public comments. I don't have anybody signed up. Does anybody have anything they'd like to say in their public comments? Seeing none, we will move on to presentations and awards. We have none. No public hearings. Our consent agenda consists of number one, approve the minutes of the February eleventh, two thousand twenty-five regular meeting. Number two, approve the minutes of the February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five regular meeting. Number three, approve the minutes of the February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five workshop. Number four, approve the minutes of the March eleventh, two thousand twenty-five regular meeting. Number five is county warrants. Number six is federal equitable sharing fund, DOJ request. And number seven is local law enforcement trust fund request. Mr. Chairman, who would prefer to consider agenda?
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Sapp, seconded by Commissioner Patterson. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? That's a fly vote. All right, public input on business agenda items. Anyone wishing to provide public comment on agenda items, please fill out a comment card on the table at the entrance of Commissioner Chambers. Please note, all comments on agenda items are limited to three minutes and/or the board's discretion. This one's agenda is number eight, request approval of budget amendment twenty-four dash twenty-five dash seventeen adjusting the general fund budget of the transportation disadvantage stream program by eighty thousand dollars, transferring funding from reserve contingency.
Good evening, Tosh Morgan, Finance Director. Um, the budget amendment before you is requesting to transfer eighty thousand dollars from reserve contingency into the transportation disadvantage program. Every year, the county coordinates with Henry County for transportation disadvantaged services. We estimate during the budget process what that annual cost is going to be. Um, for fiscal year twenty-five, we budgeted seventy, seventy-five thousand, one hundred dollars. Um, to date, we've received two quarterly invoices for that program. And those invoices have come in quite a bit higher than we anticipated. So, we're, we're estimating for the remaining two quarters, um, an additional eighty thousand if points we needed to cover that program. So, that's what the budget amendment is for you today. The quarter one invoice was just over twenty-seven thousand dollars. The quarter two invoice was over forty thousand dollars. And then they also presented us with a prior year correction on an invoice that I think was around fifteen thousand dollars. So, we've already overspent pretty much what we budgeted.
And just to give kind of an insight for the board, um, I know how you're on that board now, but so Henry County and Glaze County are joint, and the federal government did so much money for this, this program. And then we have to match those funds up to a certain point to, to make that work. Well, in the past, is what has happened is the contractor that had it before, when they ran out of money, they didn't give no rights no more, and they just shut it down. So, Henry County is continuing doing that, but they're charging us more money to make that up. So, that's why we're having to add more into it, but, um, that's something that you need to talk to them about is, you know, throw it out of the fox here. Um, eventually, we, we need to work on. And I know there's been a lot of places where they'll kind of pick somebody up and even though the person declined or ain't home, we still get charged for the trip. So, and I, I know that they were working on fixing that problem, but anyway, I just wanted to let you know why we're having to add money to this.
There, there was a meeting, but it was on, excuse me, Wednesday in this, when I was traveling to Gainesville. So, I did try to attend and listen virtually. I was able to hear part of it. They ended up muting me because of the traveling on the road. So, I was able to listen to part of it. It was, um, it was hard to understand. And then I got knocked off, so I'll try and, I did request updates.
So, we'll pretty much have to go along with this.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve budget twenty-four dash twenty-five dash seventeen, transfer and funding from reserve contingency to the general fund transportation disadvantage budget. I got a motion by Commissioner Sapp, seconded by Commissioner Taylor. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? That's a fly vote.
Is it wrong?
Roll call. Oh, was it roll call? Sorry, girl. No, let me back up. All right, we're gonna do a roll call vote. Myself is yes. Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sapp?
Yes.
That's a fly vote. Sorry about that. All right, number nine is playground equipment for Washington Park and Palmdale Park. Um, basically, the, uh, health department is, every yearly, so far, for the last two years, they've had money that they've been giving us for grants to put playground equipment in the parks. Um, this, um, this is the question that we got for Palmdale and Washington Park for this year, so, um, I didn't I don't know if we have to pick the vendor. No, I think it's, it's the, one, whichever it is.
No, I don't think they just put the other ones for reference.
But that's nicer than to give us some money for our parks.
It is. Excuse me, Mr. Chair, does this in particular, um, have to be used? Not saying that our playgrounds don't need it, they do, but does it have to be used for, uh, playground park? Specifically for playground equipment? I mean, I know this is, but I mean, this is.
It could be used, it's, the money that they have out there can be used for anything, recreation, I guess, to get people outside. I haven't really looked into what else it could, I, I mean, if you wanted to put a trailer in or something like that, they would probably be willing to use it there, but, um, I haven't all I know is they told me I could buy a park, but that's what it's like.
Yeah, I know Washington Park did just get some, uh, swings day, I think we're gonna miss it.
Yeah. I'm really glad to finally see some of that Palmdale. We didn't, we had, we had some real good equipment one time. For whatever reason, just here, went somewhere else. So, I'm real happy about this, and I move to put authorized the county manager to submit the funding to DOJ in the amount of forty-one thousand, eight hundred, four hundred eighty-seven dollars, close set, and execute a funding agreement with the DOJ.
Second.
I got a motion by Commissioner Sapp, seconded by Commissioner Barnes. Um, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? That's a fly vote. All right, that's a fly vote. We will do a roll call vote. Myself is yes. Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sapp?
Yes.
That's a fly vote. All right. Moving on, number ten, Glaze, oh, just while we're on that subject, just for what y'all know, is that a United Way benefit? Now, Joe Pepe, he's sort of running a health department now because the other lady retired, but, um, he told me that the health department's going to pay pressure clean the health department over there and have it painted. So, that's money that they're saving the county that we don't have to do, so. Anyway, number ten, Glaze County Business Park Litigation Assessment Work Order.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioner Susan Duchesne for the record. Tonight, I have before you a request to consider a, um, litigation assessment work order. What this entails is county staff and Morris to Pew have been working on the business park, as you're aware. And one of the things that we're investigating right now is the opportunity for mitigation assistance for weapons. And as you know, the southeast corner of the business park, seventy-eight, twenty-seven, if there's any way at all that we could um, somehow work with the water management district and moving, moving that weapon subplace outs through mitigation and having that available for development would be really good for the county. So, we're in the process of that, and we would like to ask the board of county commissioners to consider approving this proposed mitigation assessment work order. It will be through Morris to Pew, and it's what the company called going, going into own environmental consulting.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the proposed mitigation assessment work order for Glaze County Business Park, prepared by Morris to Pew Associates.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Taylor, seconded by Mr. Sapp. Any discussion?
That's a roll call.
I did read that. All right, roll call vote. Myself is yes. Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sapp?
Yes.
That's a fly vote.
Thank you very much.
All right, number eleven is the addition of a veteran service officer position.
Hey, this is Taylor, HR Director. Um, so, this is a request to add a veteran services officer position. Uh, this would be instrumental in showing that the veteran can retire and receive the assistance they deserve, and assistance with applying for benefits, filing claims, and accessing healthcare services. The job description for this position is attached. If you approve the position, um, there is a for fiscal year twenty-five budget for veteran services includes fifteen thousand dollars currently allocated within operating expenditures. Um, budget amendment required to support the personnel costs associated with the new position. Uh, request approval budget amendment twenty-four dash twenty-five dash eighteen to transfer the funds from operating accounts to personal services accounts.
Mr. Chair, I, I have been talking about this for the last few years since we, uh, me and Commissioner Sapp have talked about it many times as well, uh, since we opened the American Legion. And, uh, just recently, you know, found out, uh, Commissioner Barnes called me, and there's a, a gentleman over in Orton that is having some dementia problems. Found out he's veteran, uh, see if we can get him any help. They're still not sure if he's signed up. Um, I, I can't remember the exact numbers, but it seems to me that over ten percent of the county is veterans, and it goes up substantially during the winter months. Uh, I firmly believe that a veteran service officer will not only do a lot of good for the people that are here already, but also get the word out and, and try and get more people signed up so they can get benefits so that when they do get older, if they have a problem, their family has somewhere to go for help.
I agree, old heartland, yeah, we need one. And it looks like there's two motions to be made here, so.
Oh, I'll, I'll with that. I'll make a motion to approve the addition of veteran service officer position. And also make a motion to approve the budget amendment twenty-four dash twenty-five dash eighteen to transfer funds from the operating accounts to personal services.
Second.
Let's, um, let's just do one at a time. For the first, the motion, let's just do the position first and then the budget.
Okay.
Much like Commissioner Patterson, seconded by Commissioner Barnes to approve the position. I don't think any roll call to do the position, do we? I will for the mon, the money.
And just to clarify, the, the position is a part-time position, correct?
Yes.
So, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Now, we can do one for the, uh, budget.
Uh, I move to approve the budget amendment twenty-four dash twenty-five dash eighteen to transfer funds from operating accounts to personal services.
Second.
All right, much like Mr. Patterson, seconded by Mr. Barnes. Any discussion? We'll do a roll call vote. Myself is yes. Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sapp?
Yes.
That's a fly vote.
Mr. Chair, I'm in. Talk to the, um, the way that's is advanced, did I check into it when we first started with Legion and all that? Uh, Department of Florida Veterans Fair states that it has to be a county employee of not less than one thousand, and that, that's state.
Okay, um, moving on to number twelve, request approval for the chair to sign a letter of opposition to House Bill three oh one, which proposes increasing monetary tort cap on liability claims against local governments.
Uh, the Florida Legislature, oh, sorry, they, they, I'm forgetting. Florida Legislature is currently considering several bills that would significantly increase the monetary tort caps for liability insurance. Currently, the caps are set at two hundred thousand per person and three hundred thousand per incident. It could rise as much as five hundred thousand per person to a million per incident. House Bill three oh one, which includes these proposed increases, was recently amended by the Florida House of Reps with a vote of one oh three to eleven. The bill now moves to the Florida Senate, and if approved, will proceed to the government for signature. It's recently anticipated that raising the sovereign immunity cap of five hundred thousand to one million could lead to a liability insurance increase in the range of twelve to fourteen percent. In addition, House Bill three oh one concludes a provision for further increase in twenty thirty, raising the cap to six hundred thousand per person and one point one million per incident. We are strongly encouraging the Glaze County Board of County Commissioners to oppose the proposed increases to the sovereign immunity tort cap, sovereign immunity tort caps. Um, and these changes would significantly increase the financial exposure and strain to already delivered local government budgets.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve for the chair to sign a letter of opposition to House Bill three oh one, which proposes increasing the monetary tort cap, allowing liability claims to get prosecuted.
All right, a motion by Commissioner Patterson, seconded by Mr. Taylor. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? That's a fly vote. All right, we will move on to Constitutional Office, Sheriff. All good. Got inmate in the jail, good thing. We just need to check from the federal government. Um, let's see who we got here, Constitutional, Cannon. Uh, Cannon Attorney's not here. Cannon Manager is on vacation. Partner has, Mr. Shaw.
Yes, sir.
Is there any upcoming, um, finding zoning, is there gonna be a finding zoning, may, uh, May?
Yes, we have a meeting, a special meeting, May twenty-second, for, uh, that Florida home for the individual in device grading that had the damage from hurricanes in the end. That will be May twenty-seventh. And then our normal special meeting is, I believe, May fourteenth. I don't have my calendar on me. I'm going to be presenting, um, regulations for fencing.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Ms. Sue, uh, may I ask why the ca, uh, the meeting was canceled? I saw where it had been canceled, the one for the twenty-fourth.
It was improper notice, so we had to.
In proper notice?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Ms. Cooper Gaddison had come into seating last week, and I sat down with her and went over what happened.
Okay, thank you.
And then I contacted her today.
Yeah, I hadn't heard from her lately. She thinks she bothered me, she probably. Oh, she doesn't, but, anyway.
So, I contacted her today and let her know that I sent the new notice to, uh, the people that are handling this.
Okay, thank you, because I know she's staying in motel equipment.
Yes.
Taylor, you got anything?
No, sir, thank you.
Tasha? All right, we will move to Commissioner's letter. Mr. Barnes?
I don't really have anything, sir. At the, the gentleman we were speaking about in Orton, he's, I've taken him three times now. He just wandered out in the middle of the cop after he's just now. And, uh, he's four off. I just got a text. I don't know if he just sent somebody out there, but he's headed down the road now, so. I know his name, but that's about it.
Do you have anything?
Uh, I don't know if you probably know him, huh? Um, not a whole lot. Uh, gonna go down to up for a tone Friday and see my dog graduate from Atlanta. I'm excited about that.
Got, coming into the summer, got a few events going on, uh, already worked to cook off and some other things, and I'm really, really excited to see the, the advertisement for a veteran service officer position. I think they'll do a lot of good for him.
Mr. Sapp? Well, I have a lot of stuff.
Okay.
So, I don't like, I do not like, uh, we got our first, I guess, I don't know what you'd call it, get together at the Palmdale Community Village Flea Market. Selling all kinds of knickknacks, which my wife dearly loved. But, uh, it was a very good turnout. I was surprised, and I think it will just continue to grow. So, that turned out real well, and other than that, everything's well. I personally, I've talked with my brother out in Oregon twice, and sounds a little better, so I'm really glad about that. Other than that, everything's good. Mr. Taylor?
I did go out to Palmdale. I'm just seeing you.
You were not there, girl. I was there.
I did. You weren't there the whole time, Saturday, right? The flea market, that's I was there. Anyway, it was very nice. Uh, that was, the atmosphere was good. He wore excited, you know, just to, to have something in. I bought some pickles for my husband, and he liked them, so whoever y'all had there, do any pickles. But it was a nice event, and, uh, I was tired just eating back from Gainesville, but I was happy to go out there and try to support them, took my mom and dad too. So, it's just like they do Riverside Market here at the River during the season. They want to do that. I don't know that they do it through summer months. I don't think they, they know yet either, but, but it was a nice little get together, and, uh, but, um, on another note, I did want to mention that I did go there, but, um, and we've talked about this before here because of complaints, but, but I'm getting complaints myself out there on twenty-seven with all the containers. It just, it really looks
It's bad.
It looks bad, so, um, you know, out there by sergeants on twenty-seven, and I don't know if someone's been out here or if they.
South side of the bridge, is that where you're speaking up?
Yes.
Or, okay.
Yes.
I know they do agriculture there, if I remember correctly.
It looks like they're storing those, those containers, and I think neighbors are calling it, because we're getting into the storm months, and big wind coming, blow all over the place.
Okay.
The ordinance about fence, wouldn't that apply then to make them put something in parallel with twenty-seven?
If they're at, no. I'd have to see what there's on your future land.
We're gonna have to do something. That, that's terrible.
You don't, you, you can't do anything on fencing.
And, uh, this is not the only one that's got complaints. I have.
I have a.
Okay.
I didn't get one, but. I got five old dog bikes and trailers and all that stuff.
And, and, you know, I, I can, I can understand being ag, but I don't know what ag has to do with storing a thousand ICB containers.
I don't either.
I didn't know the name of them.
Yeah, there, there was, uh.
I'm just thinking off the top of my head. I don't have it front of me. If, if, this is the part where I think, I believe it's agriculture. I believe they forget what they were growing in those containers.
These right next to twenty-seven, you know.
And then there're those blue round, or black ones, go, uh, there's gonna be everywhere, and it's gonna be an eyesore. Or we could do something.
All right, yes, sir, I see. Thank you.
And that's really all I have except for I did want to ask, uh, maybe for next time, I, I missed the joint meeting.
Yeah.
The county, and the school board, and the city, but I, I heard that the ball fields were discussed a lot, and, um, to me, I, I know that they're city of More Haven ball field, so if, if something had my name on it, I would want to take responsibility, but together, as a community, I would hope that the school, the city, the county would be more willing to help, because it's for Glaze County kids. I mean, they're maybe never, maybe every child that plays isn't from Glaze County, or isn't from the city of More Haven, but, um, I walk those fields. The grass is dead and brown. I probably should have brought this up at the city, but I didn't want to disturb it tonight. The dirt, the water sprinklers don't work, the dirt, the kids trip running from, uh, home plate to first base. Um, so I don't know what, when this discussion could, could, uh, be had again, but you know, our kids deserve, it, it doesn't have to be less than in Glaze County. I go to, uh, watch my grandsons play that have moved out of county now, and even in close, and their ball fields look nice. So, this might be something for another time for the city. But when I saw that the health department gives grants to me, that's why, that's why I'm going to.
Sounds like it's right up for others.
Yeah, so like maybe for next time, I don't know if they do it once a year.
They, they do most.
So, that might be something that can look into, be looked into, uh.
Let's say they did, and they're changing.
Right, you know, but I put that in my notes. Uh, but really, I, I think the children in our community are, are worth, they're worth a good, nice playground, and they're worth to be outside, is healthy. And, uh, it just, it, it increases the morale of the community. I love to go watch my grandkids play. Of course, you have the drama a little bit, you know, people not being happy with the umpires or the coaches, but you know what? That is everywhere. That's everywhere. So, that's just a concern of mine. I'm sorry that I had to miss that meeting. I don't think anything that worked out.
Would you like to be recognized? Come up to the podium.
I just, okay. I just want to say Dr. Umpire, I heard it was good.
Oh, yeah, yes, it's good, especially on occasions where Mr. Michael comes and helps us out. We appreciate that.
I do, yeah.
Yes, he does, so. But it's mainly the grass field. The grass just needs to be, every, everything about that field needs to be repaired, but I just wanted to bring that up to let you know that it's on my mind.
It used to be taken care of. I can remember when that thing stayed.
Right, and I know the city will come out there now. After my husband and I went and tore gate off, uh, where my dog, my granddaughter used to keep her four-inch cow, and took a scag lawnmower out there and tried to drag it. We couldn't wet it, but the sprinklers are down. Like I said, the grass is all dead, so, but, so we made a way to drag it, but now the city brand does to have come, have them come on Mondays and Thursdays to drag it, but it's so dry. I mean, my daughter-in-law took a picture of my grandson sliding into home, and you can't see him for all the orange cloud. And so, I think they take the water hose and try to wet it in spots, and that's what you have is spots.
I know when, growing up, when we used to play Little League, they used to bring the, the fire truck out there.
Yeah.
And it was, it was, there was a lot of weekend work days and stuff like that with parents and kids, and
Right.
it, it was a lot of that, you know.
Like, my husband and I went out there, we were even, uh, lining the fields, but the coaches will help with that, but the grass field, I mean, I have pictures if anybody wants to see. It's, it just needs to be cut out. That's a baseball field. It's supposed to be a grass field, but it's, just go down there and look at it. Just take a ride, take a walk down to the fields and look at it. It's really, it's a little embarrassing. Um, you know, you want, you want good for the kids, and it's, it's a struggle to get kids to sign up, but if the fields, if there's anything we could do to make it look better, I think more kids would, would want to play, and even uh, more parents would trust to sign their, their children up. So, whatever we can do. And, and I know I heard it was a discussion about whose responsibility. You know what? It's all of our responsibility, for the kids, in the community. Legally, you know, on the books. I don't know what we can do, but whatever we can do. You know what? And aren't you, the orange dirt they came, aren't you brought that last year? So, the county should get some play, but the clay is, is flying away, because we're in the drought, and the sprinklers don't work for the city, and, anyway. That's all I have.
Sure. I don't have a whole lot. Um, so I can, I attended the Central Regional Assembly meeting this month, then, um, the executive director resigned, so the thing is slowly dying because they don't have any. the executive director resigned, so the thing is slowly dying because they don't have any, I think we're the only county that's paying our dues, but, um, so, that's a Southwest Florida Regional Planning Council, now the Central Florida Regional Councils had to go in there and tell them that they would come in and try to help them get going again, so I, I don't know what's gonna happen with our planning council there, so, um, if they don't do something quick, I think we should probably think about just dropping out of them and joining the Central Planning Council, because the bigger counties, they don't seem, they don't need them, they say, but, um, we need them. I mean, they do a lot for us that, that we can't afford to do, I, well, it's like right now, some plan is doing our, uh, I mean, we're paying them, but they're doing a lot of work for us that, that we couldn't get done otherwise, but, um, anyway, that's the only thing that I just wanted to bring up, whether, but I know where they are with that. Um, I don't think, I think the high school's got something tomorrow night, is that the.
Scholarship.
And, um, I don't know, we're going to dinner coming up.
The sixth.
The sixth. Other than that, I don't have anything else, um.
Yeah, I did, um, term limits pass, it's stuck in, so, they're fighting over the budget, and the House passed it, the Senate didn't, and I don't know if they're gonna, they've only got three or four days left, and, uh, it looks like it's gonna get hung out there to dry, but it, unless somehow they come up with them, we're act, they might start another session, I don't know. But, so the House and the, and the, um, the Senate can't, can't come to terms on the budget, because the Senate wants to give a tax exemption on your property taxes, and the House wants to cut the sales tax to six point two five, I think is what it was, is what they wanted to do, so. I, I don't know what they're gonna do, but, um, but it looks like terms for right now, like this, it could go up till next year. That, and there's like three, four other bills, they wanna do away with the TDCs too, where, um, so, is, there's a bill out there to take the TDC money, and it's, they're gonna give it to the county, and the county's supposed to use it for their operational funds, but then we have to cut our ad lorum to make up for that TDC money we get. Makes, makes no sense, which our TDC money ain't, what, maybe twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars a year. But, it's like Orlando, that's millions and billions of dollars that, that they have coming in there, so. But, uh, now, I, like I said, I don't know, they're, they're fighting like cats and dogs up there, we'll see what happens, but. That's all I've got, um, anything else before we close? Any issues, are we laying good? Seeing our business is done, we are adjourned at six thirty-three.